Good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, May 4th, and it is 6:09. We will stand, do the pleasurable justus of each term.
Pleasure to defy in the United States of America to the Republic of which you stands, one nation and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We thought we could have a moment of silence to honor the military, firefighters, road workers, and sheriffs and deputies as they serve our community here. Thank you. Ms. Edwards, can we have a roll call, please?
Justice McLaughlin.
President.
Justice McGuire.
President.
Justice Beck.
Mr. President, before we get rolling in the meeting, I want to let everybody know we may get interrupted by the sheriffs who are currently on site of this investigation. So we may get interrupted.
They will take that interruption. We need to do that.
Okay.
Awesome. Yep.
I just got an email from Justice Beck that she won't be here.
Oh, okay. Well, that's a good, nice question. Okay. So we need communication. Okay. First thing on the work session, on the old business, is ARP funding meeting next week. I believe that's next Thursday. And we set this for 7:00 PM, correct? Same time? Or did we set 6:00?
I thought it was 6:00.
I think it was 6:00. Don't keep it to you, Jim? I don't think you were here at the meeting and talked about that. So we're gonna add a meeting in between, I don't know how we're gonna word that, but in between the first week, first week and the third week. If that's always the second week, this will be the Thursday, it's gonna be another, an additional meeting.
It'll be the second Thursday, second Thursday of the month.
Isn't it how?
Okay, this is a standing meeting?
Yeah.
For ARP?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
No, 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 no. It's a standing meeting, yes, for ARP, no. We'll have it for ARP this time. And then going forward, and people like the residents always look at our website and find out if we're gonna have a meeting or not. Instead of posting extra meetings.
It's the second, it's the second, it's the Thursday after the second Tuesday of the month.
Oh, yeah, I can follow that.
No. Okay.
Because our meeting's on the first and the third.
How about a rundown of the dates?
Well, we could do that. We could, but that's what it is. It's gonna be on that. The second Tuesday of the month, the Thursday following.
So is this gonna be a regular meeting or a work session?
It'll be a regular meeting. They added additional meeting on too. Which would be, so that would be, maybe it would be the 18th, is that what it is?
The Thursday, um, Thursday's?
Yeah.
Just this, this, it would be the 19th. No, no, no. It would be the 12th.
You know, I mean, well, I'm gonna change the verbiage on that and make it Tuesday. So you have the first, second, and third Tuesday. It'd be a lot easier, easier to figure out if I move that to Thursday. I don't, I don't like that. How much was the Thursday fat?
Well, then you already do a resolution already? You're gonna change the resolution?
I thought we did motion.
Oh, you might have done a little motion. I don't remember. Oh, that would be the meeting minutes that we just did? Right?
Okay, anyway, so that Thursday, moving on forward, might make changes. That's gonna be the, an extra meeting in this meeting. So everybody, we talked about that, Jim, everybody needs to get a list, yourself included, of things that you see you need to spend that month at ARP. Correct you. Tracy, right, she was doing it too. Sheila getting the list, will you be talking to her?
I'll have to.
I told me all roads, I take my eye. I told me all that.
What is the next meeting date?
It's the 12th.
All right.
This next meeting will occur on the Thursday between the two existing two meetings. The first extra meeting in May will be for discussion of our plan. That's what these minutes say right here. But I don't know where you booked it on that. I think you just agreed on that. So you could, I guess you could change, and there's no, there's no vote, I don't see it. Not the way you wrote these minutes. That was in the, that was the meeting for April 19th meeting. That was in the April 19th meeting.
Okay. Josh, you sent an email out. Okay. The next one is the hiring of the administrator position. Dear Jim, I have not met the person myself. I don't even have a resolution because Sheila was gonna write a resolution. I don't have a resolution to that, so.
All right, hold on.
Yeah.
Don't you administrator serves at the pleasure of the board of trustees?
That's correct.
Okay.
They're supposed to, aren't the last one there?
You guys posted all these jobs on our website. Where are the applications? None of that information's been shared. However, according to the agenda for tonight's meeting, you're in position to hire somebody. Now, usually when you have somebody you're gonna report to, you have a chance to interview them.
Yeah, I didn't talk to anyone.
So why would you wanna hire somebody you haven't even talked to?
Well, I don't know. That's a good point. So that's all get postponed, right?
So.
We table that, we're gonna talk about it. Yeah, we need to do that.
So, you know, you don't even, it isn't even documented. How many applications were you received? I mean, all this HR stuff has been held by you and Sheila and not sharing it with me.
I didn't get, I didn't get any. They all went to Sheila. I didn't get the res, I, I, she gave me one for the road department.
You got, you got Michelle's application, that was administrative.
Yeah, yeah, that is, that's right. What was her name? I gave that, didn't I give that to you?
Michelle Cooper. You gave me.
What did she apply for?
Administrator.
So I guess you've got two people applying for it, Jeff.
And then Courtney Edwards. They both applied for administrator for this. That was the only three applications that I saw.
The way it used to be, the trustees would all get packaged with all the applications. We'd go into exec session, we'd pick them over, and then decide who we're bringing in to interview. So it looks like you guys worked on it all.
You only hired one administrator, and you did that when you and Mr. Mann was here because you didn't have two trustees. You're gonna stop me from talking. This is a work session, and I'm giving you background information. And so don't even try to cut me out.
Well, okay, so akin to you applied for administrator, where's the ethics on that, Tracy?
I'm not a decision maker. There's no ethics involved in that. If they wanna work here, I, if you're gonna stop a person from working here if they're a family member, I'm not, there's no ethics involved in that. I have no decision on hiring that.
I'm curious if ethics involved, correct?
Okay, tell me how.
Your daughter?
It's my daughter.
She'd be interested in you.
No, she wouldn't, no, she wouldn't. I have no deci, I'm not a decision maker. This is the work at the pleasure of the trustees. That has nothing, it doesn't matter anyway. She's, she got another job, and she's not, and nobody chose her for the position. And you had that decision to make. If you knew it was my daughter, then you made that decision not to hire her, right? So why are you bringing that up? Either one of you.
I didn't bring it up.
Well, why are you discussing it? Because why are you bringing it up? Because it doesn't make any difference. She's not being hired. It'd be different if she was hired.
Well, I guess the hiring practices are now just limited to the two trustees on the inside, I guess, you know.
There's three trustees.
That's gonna open up a lot of questions.
But only two trustees show up to the meeting.
Okay, then walk me through when this was discussed, and tell me how many interviews we have.
Do you not, you've not been to the meeting, so you don't know when any of it was discussed. But do you not look at the meeting minutes, the list to the meeting minutes that are posted online? I'm not gonna go and go back and tell you five meeting minutes. You didn't, you didn't wanna come to a meeting evidently you didn't wanna be involved. I posted every audio.
You don't even get agendas.
I posted every meeting minute online today.
I'm gonna go on record here. Agendas for this meeting came out at 4:00.
And that's, and that's nothing new.
No resolutions attached. There wasn't even a file in my.
Who's supposed to be doing it, Jim?
You're the chair of the meeting.
Right, and so like I had all kinds of flipping time to do this. I bust him out, I'm lucky, I took a half day off day to try and get this stuff done. If you want it done, why don't you step up to the plate and help?
No, this is intentional.
No, it's not intentional. I don't have to. I'm not having this on.
This has happened, this has happened.
So anyway.
And what happened, we had administrator for that.
The resolution, the resolution for the administrative position is on the computer. It's been emailed. It's the first I've seen right here. So if you turn the computer on, you'll see it. The next, next thing on old business is resolution for the Lucas device contract.
Do you have a copy of that?
No.
No. Do you?
She just gave me a copy to look at, and I gave it back and said, "It's okay." And she said she was gonna get it to you. So I don't have, I didn't, I printed it out.
So what are the slides, Jim? So, week one, we, we got granted a Lucas device. Can you wear it?
Here, here.
No, I was at the bank with him.
Yeah, so you wear that.
This is what I was given. I printed that out. That's not the official copy.
Anyway, I mean, we can't, it's a work session, but you will see that. Anyway, so this, Tracy's raised, was raising that, excuse me, question on the fact if, is that a contract, or is it a warranty, whatever? And if it is a contract, per the rules, you know, we're all looking, the rules we're looking under that we have to sign, we as trustees have to sign a contract. So that's why this is being brought up.
This is a service agreement for the equipment.
Yeah, but it's a five-year, I mean, five-year contract you guys are making payment every, every year. Do you want to just accept that they signed a contract as a trustee and got you guys into agreement for a contract? Shouldn't you guys agree upon that before you accept the contract?
We gotta copy the contract. I mean, how time sensitive is this?
It, that was, it should've been done, should've been done. He gave us an extension of cost for Courtney. And Lisa can give you more details with the chief. But I tried to tell him, give me everything in that resolution. Nothing out in there? Those questions are in there, obviously.
Well, should, do we wanna do that again, and then do the, and make the contract attachment to the resolution?
I mean, that's a little cleaner. I mean, we already have a problem with resolutions getting passed, and they don't have the attachments that the resolution.
That's been going off of here. That started back from Wolf's con, Wolf hired his resolution.
And Doug not coming to the meeting? Because I don't have Lisa in my mind, though.
I mean, if you've got another meeting scheduled, table this thing on the next meeting and have all paperwork with it.
You mean to Thursday, Thursday next week? I suggest put that on there, and administrative position on there, and anything you don't have a resolution for, put it on Thursday meeting as well, just vote on it.
Okay. Last but not least, so far on the list of old business is road department personnel. And we hired a road superintendent that started a week ago, last Monday, so he's been here a week and a half.
So how many applicants did we have, and how many interviews did you hold on that?
I did one.
One applicant, one interview. And I've come the application wasn't shared with me.
We really don't have to be.
Well, I gotta vote on hiring this person, so why wouldn't I see their application?
We already voted, you weren't here. He's already been hired.
So.
They voted on it at the meeting, then Tuesday and Thursday.
Right, well, there's no, no application in the package.
There was an application in the package for that meeting?
From this individual. So this is all here.
It floated around.
So is this a friend, a buddy?
No, yeah, never met the man before. Nope.
I don't understand your question. There was the application, wasn't it in the package when you hired him, or what you did?
It, it, because of HR, it got passed around the table during the meeting, but it not staying on the table, did not stay. I, I, I know I saw one, but I don't.
So it was passed, I saw it at the meeting, that's what I'm saying.
Yes, I saw it at the meeting.
But I did not post it because that's not required to be posted with the resolution.
Okay.
I posted the position and the person's name and everything. But if you were at the meeting, you would've gotten a copy, or seen a copy, or could've gotten a copy.
Well, for the record, I was not at the meeting, so I don't think you like to keep bringing that up, but.
Well, we can get you a copy he's hired now.
Okay.
So get Jim a copy of the supervisor, Jim, Wyatt.
Would that be in your files? Then, still talking about road department personnel. As you know, we've already hired Rob Griffin back. And I think I did some emails fly around, he was some.
I want to see his file. I wanna see his, his background check.
You don't have a background check that I know of. I have not received a background.
Why's it taking so flipping long to do that?
I don't know anything about background checks. I've never done them. I don't, I didn't order these, I did not send them to get background checks. I don't know who did all that background.
So let's, let's open up that category here. How long have we been, do you know how long we've been using this company? We're using it for the drug screen background check, it's basically called security check.
They're getting moved around. Now, my experience with background checks is the longer it takes, the deeper they're looking.
Right, mine too.
So is it a vendor problem, or is it an information issue? So, I mean, I get, because you were wanting to sidestep HR rules, get some, get some boots on the ground and get some work done. However, with the way that, with the union looking at us and scrutinizing how we do everything, I don't think this is the time to be setting aside rules with all the eyes on that process. And background checks and driving records, we've already been through catching after the fact, having firefighters driving fire trucks without licenses.
Someone ordered that.
So, yeah, so there's a lot of potential for embarrassment, especially if the information comes back negative.
There's a resolution that covers that.
I mean, you've got employees under probation, which gives you an out. But to fast track the process, you know, to me, push it with the vendor, not, not sidestep.
That, that discussion was, that was discussed, to the fact that we will look for different vendor. I've talked to other trustees, and it's a matter of days. Why has it taken this vendor this long? I don't know, you know, it just, it just seems like it's a little odd that a drug screen, July, day or two, background check. I mean, when they pull you over, that cop pulls you over, will know it right now. You'll, you'll, you'll know your background. They have access to it. I mean, I don't want access to it, but I mean, it's available that quick if you have, I don't like taking these people this long to do this.
But I know that at one point, it took a while because we were brokering it through sheriff's office, but that's according to their workflow, and that turnaround was very slow.
Was it?
So then the decision was made to use vendors, and I don't know if there was some glitches, but I think we worked through a couple of people doing that. So this could be a vendor issue.
So.
Well, I can tell you this. I can tell you the fire department hasn't had some of their background and BMP checks since the last year sometime. They haven't received it. So I think that I've heard it being said that they think it's a vendor issue.
There was an excuse on the table that somebody contacted this vendor, and I forget who it was, and the response was that they were going through some computer software changes, and they had a temporary glitch in the system, and it should be getting better. But that doesn't justify the comment that Tracy just made. But also, they were commenting that there was a point in time that we owed them a bunch of money when pavement was.
Oh, because they hadn't gotten any, because they hadn't gotten any invoices at all. I was like, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's, well, we owed them a couple thousand dollars, and we owed them a couple thousand dollars, and people were slow in doing the work too.
Well, but if we didn't get them in the first place, those weren't because of that, because they didn't give them to us in the first place.
Didn't get what?
They didn't give us the background checks on time in the first place.
Well, maybe they put an R, R, RIP out for the vendor, then.
So with, under the setting of road, road personnel, where are we at on staff? How many people we have on, and how many, how many people we have working?
We got the supervisor, one full-time or two full-time.
Okay.
Who's the full-time?
Call it.
Okay, and it looks like, according in the resolutions, we've got his pay issues all worked out, and he had put it on time. Is that correct?
I did a, it's in the resolution, I did a, 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 a valuation also. It turned out to be good.
Did you put the evaluation on the folder somewhere for his record?
It's in, it's, I have it here with me now, although I have not put it in his folder in 44, but it's gonna go there. Correct.
I'm just getting that ready for the auditors, because they're gonna wanna know why did you give them the most, and where did it go from, what was it from to?
Yes.
They're gonna wanna know all that kind of stuff.
On the height, you think?
Okay.
In moral business, Jim.
I think you call this business. Several meetings back, you made a decision to table the paving proposal from City of Dayton. Okay? And just that it was, you wanted to table that work till 2023?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, it's to pave the spots in between the inside Dayton, the outside Dayton part of Accent Park.
Yes.
Okay. While I was getting the bulk trash day set up, Mr. Stovall asked me about that situation.
Okay.
I asked him to revise the numbers because all the other, because palings are.
Give a copy to Tracy.
Revised numbers because there's all kinds of press with road projects getting the numbers jacked, tracked up, okay? So I asked for revised numbers, but Stovall advised me that he is okay with delaying it to 2023. But he wants a formal commitment from the board of trustees to commit to the project. So I guess by resolution, we've got to.
We left for the next week.
Commit to it, to, it's just something he brought up.
So it went from 220 to 250, what does it say? If we had done in 2020.
I'm gonna work from 190 on a.
Oh, okay. So it says estimate cost given in 2021 was 220.
That's what I saw.
And then it says the new budget estimate repair ministry in 2020, we suggest 235 to 250.
Yeah, yeah. Definitely, so we just, we just gotta.
This is just our portion or the whole project?
This is our part of it. Behind that's the map. It's kinda hard to see.
Right, I have no map.
I can email you.
No, I have.
Email has color, you can see the.
Well, you can, you can email me the, this email, that way I have a record and somebody else to see. That would, that would.
The original.
Yes, I have the original, but let me have.
You've seen this, right?
Just let me have it.
One of them, that's a nice cleaned up version.
Well, let me have the copy of that email.
Well, that's great, huh?
Well, I mean, your color copy.
Okay.
You said you had. I have, I have this, and I have that one too, but I'd like to have the color copy that you can give it to.
So, yeah, next meeting, uh, next meeting, if you can have a resolution for that, so that we can give them a commitment.
Do we have that in the budget?
I haven't looked that far. I'm just getting the discussion on the table on this here. I'm kinda looking.
I mean, this is what I'm, if we're gonna commit to it, that means I have to sign something. If I don't have, if it's not the budget, I'm not signing. I'm telling you that right now, so there's no, there's no mess about me not signing something. If it's not in the budget, I'm not signing.
Well, we don't.
You said I'm top of the agenda.
But we, we do have no major expenditures for roads this year. The ODOT project for Pinnacle and Infirmary fell through. So, I mean, you got any major projects planned this move on?
No, that's this, so.
So we should be okay budget-wise since we're not.
Well, all you have to do is put a line and a number on there. That's all I'm asking. That's all I'm asking.
So would it be best to accommodate the money, or a good portion of it towards that? Okay.
Because this is gonna happen in 2023. We're gonna have to bring some of the money for this year over to 2023.
Correct, understand that.
I'm, I'm not telling, I'm just, oh my God, I'm not criticizing you, Mike. Don't take it personally.
Okay. In moral business. Thank you, Jim. New business, code enforcement. So we do have a code enforcement position. Here we go, Jim. I had to re-demand myself. What I'm saying, I was told, I was given one, one application. I looked at the patient, and you know the name, you see, you saw the resolution, you know, for each other, the city packet there. So he's the next house your colleague. I had a good conversation with him, because that's gonna take, as we've said in the past, he peculiar type of individual to do that. And I liked the interview I had with him, and the things that he said, and the way he approached people. Because we had the conversation, you know, about a handful of things, and, you know, went well. So there again, no way else applied, he was the only person.
So is this a straight hire, or are you doing a employment contract?
Straight hire, it'd be work for us. Not like, you mean like John?
Like, just any type of addendum to a normal hire.
Is that a reservation?
No. Approval, very employee, I can't afford you. You okay with that?
He's got a big job. The big piece is being.
Do you know him, have you interviewed him previous times?
No.
You have met him?
Once he interviewed when we had, the last time we did this, that doesn't bring it down.
We did paperwork for him for some kind of a gun issue.
Yeah, he wanted to get his gun license, so they can use it in the.
He's an ex, ex Jefferson County police. He's an ex, he's an ex, Jefferson touch, please look. We had, we had proof, we had proved that he worked for us from 48 to 49, or something like that.
Yeah, 'cause I talked to you about that, and you said that you, you, and either you sent an email or something, that you, you didn't feel comfortable signing a letter for. And that was during the time you worked, yeah.
Somebody who wanted, uh, that was a firefighter. Who wanted, uh, wanted us to vouch for something.
We're not, we're not talking about things.
So, either way, either way, it sounds like, this doesn't sound like the person interviewed before.
Okay.
So, but, uh, avoiding that position has been being able to send letters, keeping computer records, and tracking the work. And that's a huge backlog.
Yep.
And.
Well, you, you saw my email, and the fact that I had reached out to this four different residents, that I had been to their properties and discussed about permits they wish to have. And, um,
That's separate from code enforcement. That's a totally different handle.
Is that zoning?
Huh?
That's zoning?
Yes. So, code enforcement is crash, trash, junk garage.
It's code, they, code enforcement, they enforce, enforce the zoning code, that's what they, they enforce the zoning code. A zoning officer does, well, let's have it then.
But we needed that, I mean, we, we'd been without one for months, we, we gotta have somebody, so. But anyway, I, as I said, I scratched up there, and get some permits, but, um, and I understand, I understand Leach was against her on that, you know, he's, he read you, you included on that, I understand that, but I asked, boy, I didn't think that it was a conference question, so I didn't do that.
I'm not.
Uh, permits, trying to get some permits, we're getting, I mean, you have residents that, um, what do they do things? Build, build a bar, build a shed, build a fence, add propane tank, things that you permit for. And they go to county, and we gotta go to township, but we don't have people to do it, so I try to step up and do it, and Leach tells me, no, you can't do that, so.
Well, we were in the exact same boat last year, and got a lot of pressure from somebody building a big, big house. Lumber prices are on the move, and it prevents progress.
Yeah.
And, uh, at that time, we had to really pedal to try and find somebody. I kinda thought that the code enforcement, the numbers for code enforcement, and actually, I think you guys budgeted this at 14 bucks an hour, and the resolution is hiring in at more than that? So.
Yeah, you're not, you're like, you're like 14?
No, no.
But like you said, if the budget doesn't hold, what are you gonna do, you gonna move money around? You know, it's almost, yeah, it's what you're telling me.
But, no, what I've tried to do is I've reached out to some other townships to see if we could broker some work through, like pay the case, pay for the view, something.